We are very excited to start this work session only an hour late, so I am going to call it to order. This is a work session that many of us have talked about for a long time, which is the importance of governance. But before we go into the governance agenda, I do need a motion, which I don't see here, for a confirmation of closed meeting, because we didn't close it out upstairs. So while somebody's getting that, do I have a... I gave them to... Thank you, ma'am. We've got one right here. In order to comply with Section 2.23712D of the Code of Virginia, it's necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on February 21, 2023, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed session. Closed meetings were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Ms. O'Meech, seconded by Ms. Keys-Gamara. All those in favor? Secondly, thank you, that motion carries. And Ms. Cornell, did you register everybody's vote, or do I need to do it again? Okay, excellent, thank you. The second item on our agenda, before we move to the order of our agenda, is Ms. McLaughlin has submitted a written request to virtually attend today's work session due to a medical conflict. All those in favor? And that is unanimous. Ms. McLaughlin, are you dialed in now? She's having... Okay, once she is back in, we'll just acknowledge that she has joined us. Thank you. Now, we have a question about the order of the agenda, and I am going to mute my microphone to hear from a Board member a question she has. And I know that we have staff here, and we would like to prioritize that the staff are here and get those items first on the agenda. Hold on. Okay, wonderful. Without objection, I would like to change the order of our agenda today so that we address the procurement policies 5011 and 5015 as the first item, so that we don't take up more of the time of our budget and procurement staff, because we know that they are working on other things during this very busy season. Ms. Burden, please.
Good afternoon. I am here to present the Staff Recommendation for Procurement Policies. With me, I have Michelle Pratt, who is the Director of Procurement Services, and Leila Sultan, who is the Coordinator of Procurement Services. And if you have questions, they'll be able to help me with that. If you can go to the next slide. The objectives today are to codify the process improvements and reforms in procurement policies 5011 and 5015. We want to codify staff's recommendation for school board notifications and approvals. And obviously, this will increase school board oversight of procurement. And all of this is to provide greater efficiency and, of course, enhance school board oversight. I thought we would show the timeline first. We created this timeline to illustrate the four OAG audits and work with the school board on contract-related topics over the last eight years. It started out in Fiscal '15, when the OAG did an audit of contract management, and their findings were that we needed to enhance our central controls and our monitoring by departments of their individual contracts. In that audit, they looked at DIT, ISD, and the Office of Benefits. Then, in January 2018, there was a school board work session that was specifically related to consulting services. And then another audit in Fiscal '18 that was primarily about sole source documents and training of their principals and their departments on procurement processes. Then, in Fiscal '19, we had another department-specific contract review, again, looking at ISD and DIT. Those audits are ongoing, and the OAG's office picks a couple of departments that they want to take a look at. The October 2019, the recommendations made it through governance, but they died shortly thereafter. We had a little thing called COVID, and so this got put on the back burner. Then, if you can go to the next page. In Fiscal '20, we had another OAG audit, and this was to review sole source again and see if our reforms had been put in place. And there was no findings on that audit. And then, in February and March of 2021 and 2022, these documents went to governance. The first time, they did not make it out of governance to get in front of the school board. The second time, they did make it out, and then that was the result of that, was the new business in May of 2022. And then, in June, it went for action, and there was a request for a work session. And I'm guessing that is why we are here today. We thought it would also be important for you all to kind of know the terms that we're talking about. So professional services, basically, you have to have a license from the state examining board. And that's stuff like accounting, actuarials, medical, land surveys, legal services, architects and engineers, those kinds of things. Consultant services, that is where a firm exercises discretion and flexibility, recommends performance improvements, solves organizational problems for us, or evaluates what we're doing to determine in more efficient ways. And that's stuff like PD, tech system implementation, program evaluations, those kinds of things. Nonprofessional services is any service that's not specifically identified as a professional or consultant, or there's no license required. That's like maintenance and repair services, snow removal, landscaping, and then just regular goods, like materials, equipment, cleaning supplies, food products, milk, computers, office supplies, those kinds of things. And again, as far as a quick summary of actions taken by the Office of Procurement Services to increase transparency through procurement reform are summarized on these slides. In FY '15, we created an online procurement manual, and this consolidates the policies, regulations, procedures, and best practices into one place. In FY '18, we worked with the school board to expand the definition of a consultant service and school board notification prior to award of all consultant contracts over 100,000, and created a public website of upcoming procurement opportunities so that our vendors and the public can see contracts that will be competed in the following six months. After the Fiscal '18 OAG audit, we expanded our training offerings and implemented a number of processes to kick off sole source reform. We increased the scrutiny of all sole source requests. We revised the sole source questionnaire and implemented a cabinet chief approval and signature requirement for every new sole source. In Fiscal '19, after the OAG audit of ISD and DIT contracts, we created a new best practice to clearly describe the ownership of contracts for measuring vendor performance. And we developed and implemented an in-house contact contract request and management system to better track those contract requests by schools and departments. In Fiscal '20, OAG audited procurement and contract management again, and there were no findings. And to illustrate the progress, you see the table of the number of sole source contracts awarded each fiscal year over the last nine years. We have come a very long way, and we are certainly proud of this. Also, in Fiscal '20, during the pandemic, we implemented an e-bidding tool to allow vendors' online access to solicitations and allow them to submit bids and proposals electronically. For context, out of the 615 contracts, 84% were competitively awarded. That means a competitive process was followed to select those vendors. The competitive process ensures transparency with the public, including the vendor community. And just so you know, the requirement ones, there's 374. Those are RFPs or IFBs. The cooperative are contracts that we piggyback, that is another government entity who has competitively bid what they were seeking, and so that we are able to piggyback those contracts without doing our own procurement process. Sole source, of course, which you all are very familiar with. And then intergovernmental, those are like GMU, University of Wisconsin, those kinds of things. And those have always come to you all for approval, and will continue to do so. The contracts by value, this shows the percentage of contracts by value. The total number of contracts, again, is 615. 25% or 152 fall under 199,000. 18% or 111 contracts between 200,000 and 499. 18% or 109 contracts between 500,000 and 999,000. 26% or 158 contracts between 1 million and 4.9. 7% or 44 contracts between 5 million and 9.9 million. And 7% or 41 contracts greater than 10 million. Of the 615 contracts, 43% fall below 500,000 in aggregate value. The changes on this slide summarizes the draft of 5011 previously submitted and addresses three key areas: approvals, notification, and reporting. The 200,000 threshold is recommended because it aligns with the formal procurement threshold as defined in the Virginia Public Procurement Act and the Fairfax County Purchasing Resolution. There's a lot of interest among the community and elected officials about consultants and professional services. And as a result, we are recommending school board approval for professional and consultant services over 200,000. Again, the 200,000 was selected because it aligns with the formal procurement threshold as defined in the VPPA and the purchasing resolution. But it should be understood that any school board review for approval results in only two options: approve or reject. A rejection means that we start over with an RFP seeking a vendor. We cannot exclude the selected vendor, and a normal RFP takes three to six months. A big solicitation can take a year or more, like an IT infrastructure project, those kinds of things. So to not approve something that staff has recommended will definitely have some consequences, but I wanted you all to be aware of those. So this is a summary of the proposed contract approval matrix. All consultant and professional services greater than 200,000 would come to the school board for approval prior to award of the contract. Current policy only requires notification. Intergovernmental MOUs and MOAs, like University of Wisconsin, GMU, at 200,000, they will continue to come to the school board for approval, and that, again, is not changing. Sole source, greater than 200,000, will also require approval by the school board prior to award of the contract. The current policy does not require approval. And then, goods and nonprofessional services greater than 500,000 would require notification. And that would, again, include routine big-ticket items like food, dairy, custodial supplies. Current policy does not require approval nor notification. Now, the ones that are over 500,000, you should know that that is a notification prior to the award, so that'll have to come through John Foster's office as a legal briefing, because you do not want that information prior to the award to be out in the public. So there is a legal exemption for that. They would need to come through his office. And the approval prior to the award would occur at a single meeting via the consent agenda. In closing, we've worked really hard to respond to the concerns of the school board and the OAG audits with process improvements leading to greater accountability for consulting services, sole source designation, and principal program manager training identified in FCPS regulations. We've also provided greater transparency through enhanced access via our website, our e-bidding tool, and as well as reporting via the board briefing. The policies before you codify these changes in line with the Fairfax County Purchasing Resolution and the county's purchasing agent, which provides FCPS its delegated purchasing authority. FCPS's thresholds are a little more stringent, but that's allowed. These also align with the Virginia Public Procurement Act, which identifies methods of procurement. Neither of these, the Fairfax County Resolution or the Virginia Public Procurement Act, contemplates approvals or notifications by elected bodies. But we hear you, and so we are, of course, allowed to be more stringent than those two groups and their documents. So we recommend that Policy 5011 and Policy 5015 move to the next regular school board meeting agenda.
Just for clarification, at this point, I believe it's on new business for the next one and approval on the following one. So with that, we have a number of people who have lifted their placards. We'll start with Dr. Anderson, followed by Ms. Cohen, and then Ms. Keys-Gamara.
Thank you. I feel like I've seen this document quite a bit, so I appreciate all of the work that you have done and done again and done yet again to get us here. Hopefully, this time, we'll get it through the finish line. Just a few inquiries. When you talked about, and I don't have page numbers on this, so it's hard for me to identify, but this one that says "contracts by value", can you speak a little bit to what is the impact to multi-year contracts when you're talking about these amounts? Is it what it's worth in that current year's budget? Or is it what it's going to be worth over the lifetime of the contract?
There we go. Thank you for the question. So we are measuring over the initial term of the contract. Typically, our standard initial term is five years. Not always, but the contract value we're presenting before you is the initial term. It would not include any renewals.
So it would be over the five years?
Correct.
And that would be the dollar amount over the five-year term?
Correct.
And if we were to reauthorize that contract, then we would see it again at that five-year mark for whatever it costs for the next...
In accordance with the proposed thresholds, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And Dr. Anderson, I did want to point out that, like, on the contracts by type, it says that we have 93 sole source. That 93 reflects, if you look at the previous page, when it says we have 12 this year, that 93 reflects sole source contracts that are still active, but could have been issued as far back as Fiscal '17. So that 93 is everything that is active now, but some of them may have been for years ago.
So let me ask you this. Since this activation of... You offered a really good timeline in terms of the audits and some of the work that the Board has undertaken on this matter. Since then, can you give us an idea of how many new sole source contracts have been enacted?
Yeah, it's... The sole source reform happened... Well, the OAG audit was in Fiscal '18, and that's when we kicked off making changes to how we were doing sole source.
And that was in 2018?
Yes. And then, in Fiscal '20, audit did a follow-up to see how we were doing, and that's when there was no findings. The list on that page of the contract shows how we've had, you know, a huge decrease in the number of sole source since we increased the documentation that's required to put forth a sole source contract. So back in Fiscal '14, Fiscal '15, when all of this first came up, you know, 64, 53, 50. And now, in Fiscal '23, we're at 12. We had 10 last year, 15 the year before that, seven in Fiscal '20. So we've made great strides in reducing the number of sole source contracts.
You mentioned that's due to the documentation that's being required. Can you give a little bit more specificity?
So each department who's requesting a sole source contract has to fill out a three-page questionnaire. There's like 14 questions about why they deem this to be a sole source. And we review that. We may or may not approve their request. But once we determine that it will be approved, we then prepare an internal justification, which is maintained in the procurement contract file. That justification document is signed by four levels of approval, all the way up to the cabinet-level staff member. And then, we retain those documents in our file. So the Assistant Superintendent also has approved the request for the sole source. So we're getting approval at the time it's requested and at the time it's approved by an LT member.
And that one protocol has really decreased those numbers. That's very interesting. One of the things that you mentioned on this page that says "proposed changes" when it comes to the sole source contracts and contracts over 200,000, you said it's either approve or reject. Aren't those the only options for all of the contracts? Can you kind of tease that out a little bit more? Is it because you're saying there shouldn't be any conversation? Go ahead.
I think you're right. I think the point was more to emphasize that if we have to restart a procurement process, the delays, the time that it takes, the staff time, et cetera, would come into play. Also, I think that it would be a negative impact on the vendor community, who spend a fair amount of time and resources to submit proposals for us to evaluate. So if you think about the... You know, a contract is presented, and for whatever reason, the Board decides we should not move forward, we still have an unmet need. Otherwise, we wouldn't have had the solicitation that was issued. So we'd have to sort of reuse all of those resources to try to get back to have that need met.
So walk us through a worst-case scenario. You bring something forward for an unmet need, and the Board decides this is not fiscally responsible and rejects the contract. You go back, and you start the bidding process all over again, and you said that that vendor that was up can also reapply and be part of the process. So the impact is that we don't have whatever is this thing that we need for the division for that period of time and longer as we restart the contract. Is there anything that is legally... Please pause my time. I want... Oh, John is here. Is there anything that is legally... A legal risk to the Board in that sense? Because if you have conversations with vendors and you get to a particular amount, do we leak out to others what our thresholds are not kind of unnecessarily? Oh, you could start it again.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure I understood the question. You're asking, is there heightened legal risk to the Board for providing contract thresholds publicly? Is that the question?
No, if one is denied, and obviously, all that information is being made public, what is the impact to us legally? I definitely hear that there's a reputational impact. But legally, would that now put us in a space where... And also, maybe from a procurement perspective, does that put us in a space where the next contract may not be as favorable?
So I don't see any legal risk. I do worry about reputational risk to the Board if you're taking that action. You know, I don't know if the procurement team has any additional thoughts on that.
I really think the reputational risk and then the resource use are the biggest risks. I think, too, depending whether it's a bid or an RFP, bidding is public. So the pricing that a vendor submits is made public at the time the bids are opened. That could get us into a place where vendors now have seen what their competitors are bidding, and we're... They may have caused to protest our recommendations. So, you know, it's certainly something that we would want to avoid, in my opinion.
So how do we mitigate that from happening? I don't know.
I mean, we approve what's been presented. I guess the question may then become, do we really need whatever it is we were soliciting operationally?
I'm going to come back to that, because that doesn't seem to be as satisfying as a response as I would like to have had. On this page, the contract approval, this sheet, the first one, "All Contracts and Amendments: Proposed Threshold", it says unlimited? Can you explain that a little bit? Is it unlimited, or there's no minimum?
So that is for goods only. If you go to the third column, we're trying... We're telling you what we're buying in column number three, "Commodity Type". So there is no proposed threshold for goods only.
Okay, these are the goods that you described as the unprofessional services earlier, correct?
These are commodities, you know, dairy, milk.
Right.
Toilet, yep.
And my last thing here is the alignment to the county. I know this was raised when we worked on this in governance, and I'm not sure if you had a chance to articulate it here. Can you speak a little bit to how the proposed changes are aligned to what our counterparts on the Board of Supervisors have in their processes?
So currently, the Board of Supervisors does not approve any contract. The only thing they see are professional and consultant services over 200,000, and they receive notification prior to award.
And looking at here, the notification we would receive are four, 1, 2, 3, the fourth item, the new contracts and contracts amendments for nonprofessional services. So pretty much, that one section is the only one that really mirrors what the Board of Supervisors engage in.
It's actually row two, "Contracts and Amendments for Professional and Consultant Services Over 200,000". So we have approval, they have notification.
Right, I meant the only one that aligns is that fourth one. I think I said the same thing in the opposite...
Okay, all right.
In the opposite way. That's my time, but I would love to get a sense of that earlier question. Dr. Reed, I don't know if you have any thoughts on... It was the question regarding kind of the risk that can be available, I guess, to FCPS if there is some notification of what the bids are and kind of how we would mitigate that and deal with it? That's the only piece that I think has not yet been responded fully for me.
I mean, there's a number of negative impacts when a Board reviews awards. There are project delays. We can lose key personnel and management teams originally assigned to a contract. The contract transition could be affected because we would not have an ability to ensure a seamless transition from one contract period to the next. If we don't have an appropriate extension on the contract that we're not moving forward with, then we could have a gap there. And, you know, as much as I hate to bring this up, for example, our healthcare, if we could not continue with one and didn't award the other, that would be devastating to our employees. And that's just one example. There's also supply interruptions and inability to predict the timing of award could adverse affect the supplier's ability could adverse, affect the supplier's ability to provide the document, the items to us, increase supplier costs, reduce supplier interest as a result of, you know, well, you can't get it through their board, you know, something like that. If somebody, if we, if there was a lot of rejections of contracts, that's the reputational risk that Ms. Pratt talked about. And of course, staff resources, additional time and preparation required by staff to start over. And then board resources, when, you know, if they're tied up reviewing and approving awards, distracting you all from other important priorities.
Thank you, Ms. Burden. We have Ms. Cohen, and following Ms. Cohen, we have Ms. Keys-Gamara. And I'm going to ask for our board members, and I know you guys are always really good at this, but to try to keep your questions tight and not repeating others and so that we also don't have a repetition of timing because we only have an hour and a half. Thank you, Ms. Cohen.
Thanks, Anna. I appreciate you all have run the gauntlet, not once, not twice, but three times through governance. So to say there's been a couple of boards' worth of eyes on this is not an understatement. The biggest thing to me that I really appreciate is what you all have tried to do here is thread the needle between, like, making sure that we are not in a position where all of a sudden, there's something in the news that's a, you know, $900,000 contract. And we get asked and everyone goes, I've never seen it, never heard of it. And so, you know, we don't want to be left flat-footed. And then the other side of that is that schools don't get toilet paper because it happened in between meetings or on the summer break or, and we definitely don't want to be in the way of that. So I know that this is not an easy place to be. I appreciate you taking a crosswalk of trying to look at other jurisdictions and looking at the county policy. And I think it is, it's reasonable for us to be, you know, pretty tight on what we, especially professional and consultant services. That makes absolute sense to me. But then having a higher threshold for non-professional, you know, makes a lot of sense. And certainly, the goods and services. I don't think there's anybody on this board who wants to sit through meetings. I looked at LA County one time and they had like, you know, hours-long meeting where they're literally just approving like, you know, tissue and paper towels and all. And if that doesn't happen, then that's, you have schools who go without that and it gets hung up at the warehouse and all the things that you said. All of a sudden, the contract is so delayed that the price of paper goes up and then everything gets canceled. So I think, I feel like we're in a really good place with this. I know there's been so much hard work that's gone into it. And you really have worked hard to try to, you know, marry really good oversight, but not muddying up this whole system, how it works. So thank you. I am 100% in support, as it was last time, of it going on to the board, regular board meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Ms. Keys-Gamara, please.
Yes, I agree with the perspectives expressed so far. And I appreciate the higher, I'm understanding the 500,000 to be more for goods and services as opposed to professional. Where we've had some problems in the past have had to do with particularly sole-source contracts. And that is perhaps where the most reputational risk can occur. So is there, is there a process that we have for review of those? I know you say people have to apply for a sole-source contract to be approved. When I looked through this, I didn't see exactly how those are reviewed. Is that something that we can make available, not just to the board, but to the public, especially those that are likely to complain about sole-source contracts?
I think you're referring to the questionnaire that's submitted and then ultimately, the sole-source justification documentation. So currently, those reside in our files and they have been foiled from time to time. We don't post them publicly because they're not part of the contract. They're really just the documentation of the contract. So we only post the contract documents publicly.
Do we, for example, include a conflict, a potential conflict evaluation? I know we've been, we've had some very public conversations about this, these particular things could create a problem because this person knows this person or whatever. I mean, do we have a process by which we're trying to make sure that we're vetting that ahead of time in terms of relationships? For example, I know when I was on the Planning Commission, I had to sign documents that I didn't have relationships with people that were coming before that board.
So the expectation is that all employees are in compliance with our policies and regulations. And I think that is addressed in the policy, conflict of interest policy. Specifically for competitively awarded contracts where the, a vendor is being evaluated, we have what we call a disclosure statement. We don't have that for sole-source contracts. I think that might be something we could consider as sort of a continuous improvement step. I hadn't, I hadn't given that much thought, so.
I know when I've heard about it, that's been the underlying concern. So I offer that just for consideration. Also, the notification for sole sources at the 200 level, 200,000?
So what we've proposed is approval of sole source over 200,000.
Okay, all right. So, I mean, I, with the exception of perhaps incorporating, I know there's a separate policy, although I know sometimes we don't look in a separate place. If I'm doing a contract, oh, let me check that conflict interest policy. So perhaps that's one thing that could be included, that everyone is taking a look at that prior to engaging in a sole-source contract. But I, the overall goal, which I'm sure you know, and the board is in agreement that we want to avoid all appearance of impropriety. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamara. Ms. Tolan, followed by Ms. Omage.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work on this. A couple of quick questions. I just wanted to point out, I think if I got my math right, on one of the charts, it shows that now the board will be seeing like 75% of all of our contracts, right? So, you know, for anyone that's worried about, you know, are we doing the oversight job that we need to do? That's a large number of contracts in a district this size. I just had one question, I kind of follow this up with Dr. Anderson's question. I just want to make sure I understand. If we have a contract that we put out at a certain amount, but then I know sometimes we add on to a contract. You have the vendor's doing a great job or there's some other function that they can do under that contract, we add dollars onto it. So where, where will the board see it, kind of along the way?
Well, again, the 200,000 threshold would come into play. So let's say, for example, we did a contract for $175,000. But then there was a later, that would not come to the school board for approval. But then we, there was amendment for 50,000 that took it over 200,000. Then that, that, the whole contract would come to you all after that. So, yeah, we have factored in amendments as something that if that pushes you over the threshold, then it would come to you for approval.
So a contract might actually come multiple times for approval, just depending upon the amounts that are put under that contract? Okay, thanks, I appreciate that clarification. And I do really appreciate all of the oversight with the sole-source contracts. And, you know, everything that we're taking a look at there and being very careful about. I'm very, you know, aware of why that's necessary. But I just wanted to throw out there, I mean, there are times where we do need a sole-source contract or it totally makes sense. You know, we would do training with the Chesapeake Bay Foundation, for example. I think they're the only people I can think of that have all the boats and all of the overnight facilities for our teachers to take advantage of. So a sole-source contract totally makes sense. You know, I just want to say that, I think for my colleagues in the public, that, you know, a sole-source contract is not necessarily a bad thing, but it is something we need to pay attention to. And I think that's, oh, I have, oh, I just have one other comment and maybe you can clarify this for me. Are all of these contracts, based on Virginia law, we have to choose the lowest bidder?
It depends what we're buying. And based on what we're buying, how long we think we might need that thing or those services and the estimated value of the contract, we'll make a determinant of what the best method of procurement is. And the method would be request for proposal, where the evaluation is based on qualifications and experience rather than an invitation for bid, which is lowest price, lowest responsive and responsible bidder wins. So one's based on price, the other's based on qualifications and experience with the opportunity to negotiate price. So we have both methods available to us. Construction is only bidding.
Construction is only?
Correct, then that's required by law.
The lowest bidder.
Yeah.
I see. Our construction and some of our, maybe grounds and maintenance kinds of things.
Potentially, mm-hmm. So food is often a bid, right? We pick the food vendor that complies with our specifications for?
Right, and as long as they meet the specifications, you have to take the lowest bidder.
Yep.
Okay, got it. Thank you. I know we run into problems with that sometimes, but I appreciate the information. Thank you so much for working on this.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Ms. Omage?
Thanks, thank you for joining us. I guess just a follow-up. Can you just flesh out a little bit more how we choose which process we use? Besides what you already just said.
So, I mean, I think past history will often be a dictator or an indicator of how we're going to move forward. You know, sometimes we attempt to bid. And with bidding, where we're looking at price being the driver, a vendor will come back and take exception to some of our terms and conditions. And if they so much as cross out a word or condition their price in any way, then we consider that to be a negotiation and we deem them non-responsive. So we look at those things to determine whether or not it might make sense to do the request for proposal process. Obviously, an RFP takes significantly longer than a bidding process would take. I would say bids take 30 to 60 days, whereas RFPs take, you know, three to six months minimum. Is that helpful?
Yeah, I mean, combination of timelines and then factors, I guess, in the negotiation.
Yeah.
Okay. I actually was going to start off by just asking, I know that this amendment, or this policy has been kind of revised several times over the years. Can you just provide a bit of a narrative as to what, if any, were the triggering events from your knowledge that led to that and what some of the pros and cons in the conversations around the changes have been? I don't know if that, I'm sure the chair, you know, the committee can weigh in here too, but perhaps we can start with staff and then go to the chair.
Well, I mean, all of the questions about consulting and sole source and school board oversight came about before my time and actually before your time too. And it was the Batel for Kids contract that received a bit of scrutiny. And that was, I guess, the genesis of our procurement reform.
That's helpful. And then I guess for the current proposed changes, I'm just curious about what some of the conversations are because we can kind of rehash the same conversation governance has been having for months. Or you can kind of give us, you know?
So as the chair of governance this year, we have actually not looked at these policies again. Many of us who were on governance this year were on previous governance committees. And I will tell you that I was actually the board member under the last board who put forth the motion to increase transparency and accountability of our contracting processes. And so when the staff came to me and said, look, this is standing out there. We haven't actually approved it. I said, well, we've had multiple opportunities to talk about it in the past. Let's just bring it to this session today. And I really appreciate Chair Sizemore Heiser's willingness to dedicate one session to governance so that we could, could do just that.
That was pulled from consent a few times, right?
Yes, please.
Yes, it's, this has been floating out there for, before our time on the board, I will say, for several years, and it's been pulled twice from consent. And the last time it was pulled, it was asked to be sent to a work session so we could have a little more of a conversation about sort of the reasoning and the impact of this. So that's, it's taken a little while to schedule that work session, as, you know, as you know. So that's what this work session is about, is this policy, as well as many other pending governance items. And so that was a purpose here. It is listed for new business and consent again after this work session. I hope that helps address that.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's helpful. I guess there are only two things that mainly stand out to me. One, I worry about kind of the approval, now that we've put more of a burden, if I'm understanding this correctly, on ourselves as board members to be approving some of these, and it's on consent to approve them. It just becomes pro forma? And so what are we? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, it's on consent again, I think to Mr. Cohen's point about not having hours-long meetings. But any board member can pull something off consent on the action and then ask staff.
Of course, of course.
So, Ms. Sizemore Heiser, I think what Ms. Omage was addressing was not necessarily this policy being on consent, but the concept of the approval of contracts may be on consent. And if I could clarify, I believe as a board member, it is my job ahead of time to look at what's on consent, read what's on consent and ask any questions that may come up in advance of that. And you will see some work further on in this work session about really the role of board members.
Right, but then with the understanding that we're going to be receiving regular correspondence explaining the contracts.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
In advance of them actually being approved.
Being posted, yeah. Okay, that's fine. And then the second, just the second piece that stuck out to me, or stood out to me for staff. I guess when you, when you allocate a number like 200,000, 500,000, it might be more relevant relative to what the purchase is, right? So if it's buying some kind of service that's going to, I don't know, survey thousands of kids, it'll make sense that the number's this big. But then what about those situations? And I don't know how we would flag them for the board necessarily, where the 200,000 or the 500 doesn't seem proportional to the project, right? It might not raise that flag because it's still within the threshold, but may otherwise seem excessive. Does that make sense? Like, the number is only big relative to the project it's paying for. So what about those cases where the project is not deserving of that amount, but it's still under the threshold and therefore will pass under the radar?
Well, that's not the intent of the threshold. Because, you know, we do have this full-blown process where, you know, all the way up to chiefs look at the, and so if something was, if the value was questionable, that would certainly be caught before it even got to you. Because that's part of the review of the people that are putting together the proposal and reviewing, you know, offers, or is that they are looking at the, at the price and what we're going to get for those funds. So all of that should be worked out before it actually makes it to an award.
I guess ideally, right? Because we would still have this process, the whole reason we have this process is because some things aren't, right, caught? Or perhaps the board's judgment on something differs from how staff chooses to proceed?
I don't, I don't think so. My understanding was that the board wanted greater oversight on consulting contracts and sole-source contracts, that there, that's where their interest lies. And they also want to be notified about big contracts. Again, as Ms. Cohen pointed out, because you don't want to be blindsided. You don't want one of your constituents asking you about something and you don't, you don't know anything about it. And so that, those are the things that we are trying to address with these changes in the policy for procurement.
Yeah, no, no, I definitely see how that's responsive to the concern, what triggered this. I guess I still wonder about situations where it may still be perhaps in our minds an irresponsible purchase, but because it's small, proportional to what it's, what's being served, it won't meet these numbers. But I guess that's something for future consideration, I don't.
I mean, that's somewhat subjective and, you know, we have, you know, I guess, 26,000 people that are experts in that area that are, that are riding hurt on that. So, yeah.
No, I know, but, but the whole point of the exercise in having the oversight is because all those people making those decisions somehow haven't satisfied the board, right? In what we consider to be valid judgment or, or how, or how about this? Judgment that we feel comfortable being accountable for, right?
Thank you, Ms. Omage.
And if you can get a majority of the people around this table to agree with you, then you can not approve it.
No, no, I don't seek to do that. I just identified a potential problem area that I'm concerned about.
Thank you very much. With that, I'm going to move on to my colleague, Mr. Frisch, who is co-managing this session today.
Thank you. I think I was governance chair when we first put this to the board. So I think the thing that's being lost in this discussion, because so much is changing, and believe me, a lot is changing here, is the overarching benefit to the school division that we're getting out of this. We are significantly increasing the school board's oversight. We are significantly increasing the school board's oversight and transparency of contracting in Fairfax County Public Schools. Something, an effort that began before this Board was seated and continued through most of this Board's term is finally coming to fruition. And that is a big deal. As Ms. Tolan mentioned, we're going up to 75%. Let me give you an example of where this would have been helpful. Cigna. Had this been in place when we entered into our contract with Cigna, the Board would have had to approve that contract, and we would have had lots of questions, to be clear, to be sure. In fact, down the road, as we consider other policy changes, I think it might benefit us to have discussions about what it means for the school division to go out for vendors over a certain amount. Like, if you have a vendor that you have a contract with that you're paying $20 million a year, 40, whatever it is, and there's a want to potentially change that vendor, then the Board would be brought into that thinking before we move on to a major change like that. But that's beside the point, because what this does is it adds a bunch of new classifications of contracts that we will be on the hook for approving. Some of those will be put on, they will be put on the consent agenda. And as this Board has shown, we have no problem pulling things off the consent agenda. This policy is proof of that. And so, I'm very grateful. One thing I do want to note is... And this is something that I'm sure Ms. Corbett Sanders is going to speak to. The question of what happens as a contract grows over time. So, every kind of conceivable path of questions that the Board and previous Boards have had around contracts and dollar figures has been gone over. The policy you see in front of you is not the policy that school board members received from staff. We made significant edits and changes discussed with staff on numerous occasions. I think we had three or four meetings on it. When I was Governance Chair, I know that there were meetings subsequent to that when it went back to the Governance Committee. So, you know, and I have, I'm going to read a question from Ms. McLaughlin because she's unable to dial in. But ultimately, I think if there's any questions, it's going to be around whether these dollar figures are sufficient. And I, for one, do not want to be on the hook for ordering toilet paper. So, I think that we've struck the right balance, as Ms. Cohen said. To that end, I do want to read this question from Ms. McLaughlin. She says, "I think we need to ensure school board approval of consulting contracts over 100,000, and school board approval of large contracts like Cigna Health, 1.2 billion over five years. Perhaps you could address the reason that we chose the dollar figures that we chose? I think that might help respond to that comment."
Well, part of it was consistency. The Fairfax County resolution changed to 200,000, and we would like to be at 200,000 as well. In fact, I think one of ours was 250 currently, and we dropped it to 200 just to, because I have a great desire to simplify things where we can. Most of the time, all attempts to simplify must be thwarted, but this time, you know, we've at least made it here to talk about it with a simplified. So, the 200,000 that's in the purchasing resolution with the county, that was what kind of drove why we chose that amount. I did want to point out that, under this current recommendation, Cigna would not come to you all for approval, but it would come to you for notification prior to award. And I think we did that this time, but it was a much less formal kind of process. But even under this, that would not come to the Board for approval. And I think I mentioned the dire consequences of a contract like that that's running out, and we need to move to a new one, and we, that would be a problem.
Madam Chair, could I reclaim the 15 seconds I gave to Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, Mr. Frisch.
Don't, do not disagree, and that's why a major shift like that should probably be discussed with the Board before proceeding to RFPs for a huge change, because we're dealing with the aftermath of what happens when we move into a contract that makes such a large change.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. And in prior changes like that, they were brought to the Board. So, I think that there's an understanding that that should happen. Ms. Darinak Kovacs?
Thank you, and thank you all for this work. And Ms. Burden, I was going to ask that because I didn't think it was, as it was stated, that we, that would never, that wouldn't come to us. But can you explain why the Cigna contract is not like under our... To the public, so they understand. Like, you're saying, under these new revisions, the Cigna contract would not come to us for approval.
The services provided by Cigna are the management of our medical program and therefore are not considered by definition a professional or a consultant service.
Thank you.
It's not a sole source. It's actually a non-professional service.
Yes.
So, based on this, it would be an over $500,000 contract and would go to the Board for notification prior to award.
Thank you. But thank you. Yes, Karen, you and I were together at those times, met previous Boards. So, thank you all for your hard work. I think it's very important that we are at this point where we can do this. And as you said, this reform policy with more transparency will allow the Board to, and we will have to do our own work, right? We will have to go and we'll have to be aware and look, because as they will be on consent. But now, as other colleagues have stated, you know, we pull from consent all the time, but at least they will be there for us. And, you know, I just want to make certain that, this is very technical, it's very small, but making certain when they are there on consent, there's links to the actual contracts themselves. Because I don't know if that is always the case. I don't think it is always the case. So, I think that's important, that we have easy access when they come up, because oftentimes, they're just listed, but we don't have the link to the actual contract. So, if we can do that.
Thank you very much, Ms. Darinak Kovacs. I will take my time, but I see that Dr. Anderson put her placard up. If I can just keep you to one minute, and then I will summarize, and we'll continue on to the next one. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Sizemore Heiser will go before Dr. Anderson.
Just very, very briefly, I think, as Ms. Tolan, my colleague, stated, that 75% of the contracts will come to the Board, and they will be up on Board Doc. And I appreciate Ms. Darinak Kovacs stating to have the link to the contract itself. But I would recommend perhaps, and this is just a recommendation, that we have some sort of process by which, perhaps in the Monday Letter, Dr. Reed, or somewhere, the place where upcoming contracts revoked, there's a little summary of, here's what this contract's about, here's whether it's a continuation, whatever it may be. So, that way, the Board has that and knows to say, "All right, let me go take a further look because I'm interested in this, or not interested, or I have questions." Just to help that process along, I would recommend. Just considering something like that as we look, and perhaps as something, even a conversation in whoever's in the Chair's seat, and say, "Here's the contracts coming up. What information has gone to the Board?" To help facilitate that process.
Thank you, Ms. Sizemore Heiser. I will ask that that actually go through our legal department because of the confidentiality piece. Okay. Dr. Anderson?
Yes, very briefly, going back to what I asked earlier in terms of mitigating contracts that may show up and the risks that come with it being rejected, I wonder if there's space for some pre-work to build understanding with the Board when such contracts are to be on consent, so that there could be a building of understanding prior to the public conversation, and questions can be asked in order to, one, give you an idea of where people are in the success of the contract being approved, and, two, to respond to inquiries that would influence the approval of such contracts so we don't end up rejecting them and setting forth in motion all of the things you've described earlier. I guess what I'm asking is, is there an opportunity for some pre-work with Board members just to ensure greater success?
Yeah, I mean, that, to me, sounds like a communication challenge. That, and everything over 500,000 that's, you know, not sole source, not intergovernmental, not consulting, will come to you all for notification, again, via Division Counsel briefing. And that would be the time prior to the award when questions could be asked and, you know, education could be provided about the item that's, you know, slated to be purchased or serviced. So, I think that will, that will catch all the things that, you know, there might be an interest in.
Is that it, Dr. Anderson?
Thank you very much. So, this item is on for approval. And I will tell you that as somebody who made the very first forum topic on this item five, six years ago, I think that this is a welcome improvement. I will address the question regarding 100 versus 200, because at the time of that forum topic, it was 100. And the reason that we, that I feel comfortable with the 200 is because the economy has changed significantly over five years, and the thresholds for contracting should adjust over time. And so, I am fine with that. But I do ask all of my colleagues to please approve this so that we can move forward and we can ensure the transparency and accountability that we all expect as Board members. And I want to thank you all for all your hard work and patience with us. Thank you.
Could I just go, sorry, could I just go back? Ms. Keys-Gomara asked me a question, and I want to clarify. Our sole source request form does have an attestation from the people that are submitting and signing that says that they will not, they don't have any financial interest or will benefit in any way from the selection or award of a contract to that vendor. So, just wanted to close the loop on the sort of perceived conflict of interest with a sole source. Is that helpful?
I think it's a little wider than that, if I can...
Yes, I think this is where it gets into regulations and what the actual forms are. And so, rather than spending the time today on that, given the shortage of time, if I can ask you to work through the superintendent to make sure that we have that transparency in the forms that are being used.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. With that, we're going to move on to, and I hope that the next two items can go quickly. And then, that would be the remote participation resolution, which you all have. I sent it around over the weekend. The primary changes are aligned with the state guidance that we received. The big difference in, between the state is that the state isn't, is silent on participation in closed sessions. And the recommendation was to have participate, not to have virtual participation in closed meetings unless there is an emergency. Yeah. So, Dr. Anderson?
I guess that was a presentation. Thank you. Very quickly, on page two, you talked about a general description of the member's location. Can you give me an example in terms of what is expected? And is this also our development, or something that is connected to the state code?
It is connected to the state requirement, and all it is, is that you're, whether you are present in the state of Virginia, I believe.
Oh, that's it? Just you're in the state of Virginia, or you're not in the state?
Yeah, you know, I'm traveling outside of the state.
I see. So, it's fairly broad. And the other piece that I thought was interesting, and again, if you could just let me know, is this connected to the Virginia requirement? This is page three, reference to personal conflict. It asks to set forth the specific nature of the personal matter. It doesn't make it personal anymore at that point. Can we speak to that a little bit?
I believe that's in the code. I'm going to ask Mr. Foster to speak to that, please, or into the guidance that we received.
Excuse me, that's correct, that that language is based on the Virginia code.
Okay.
Dr. Anderson, do you have additional questions or clarification?
I think I had one more, but I think you already spoke to it about the closed session. The, I mean, the closed meetings being the newest section. No, I think that's it.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. I have Ms. Sizemore Heiser.
Yes, thank you, and I appreciate a lot of the hard work on this. I just had one question on page two. And it states, on number one, that a remote participation request must be submitted 24 hours in advance after an emergency. Is that also illness, if someone gets sick that day? Does that include as part of emergency?
That would be covered under an emergency, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that included illness if someone...
Or if you were in a car accident, or if you were, you know...
No, no, absolutely. I just wasn't, emergency and illness aren't always the same thing. So, that's why I wanted to clarify that that would be included if someone woke up that morning with a high fever, let's say.
Right. The idea is that, for planning purposes, we do need to ensure that we have quorum.
Oh, absolutely, on page two.
Any other questions on this one?
Nope, that was it. Thank you.
Excellent. So, this too is going toward, going to approval. Now, if we could move on to school board member professional standards. And this too was circulated to all Board members ahead of time. The purpose behind this is really to address the changes that have occurred with professional, with the role of Board members now that we have staff working directly for us. I have, now, I'm going to ask, I saw Ms. Marin put hers up. Okay, thank you. I didn't know if you guys, okay. So, Ms. Marin, would you like to speak to this?
Sure. So, the Governance Committee worked with the draft from our Division Counsel on this. And at first, the draft, if you recall, it really conflated two things. One was school board members' interaction with our school board office staff as a matter of supervision. And the second piece was about school board member code of conduct and infractions. And upon conversation, the Governance Committee realized that those issues really should be separate with the former about supervision and matters with our school board office staff being in this policy, which is new. And then, the school board member conduct being in the Governance Manual to be updated. So, that would include things like consequences or courses of action if there is an infraction of the code of conduct. So, for the purposes of this policy and conversation, it's just about the interactions with our school board office staff, which, as the public may not know, we have a robust staff now of one staff, eight or executive assistant per school board member, which is a little bit more than was granted a few years ago. And it just necessitates that we be formal about our supervision and processes and all of that. So, my personal questions that I had, that I wanted to raise to the Board was, so involving this policy and in issues where there's a school board member and school board office staff member, you know, disagreement or need for some guidance, the role of the Chair and how much the full Board is involved in that process. Because our Chair is not the ex officio supervisor of our school board staff. So, that remains to be determined. And then, what the role is of the Chair in matters of conflict. And then, I also, at the end, it says reconsider how, I'd like to reconsider how, quote, "all Board members are to implement this policy." Because we know if everyone implements the policy, nobody implements the policy. So, what can be done to clarify the accountability? So, I do think that this is worth putting forward and voting on with those additional things being addressed, if we don't necessarily address them today. But at least it puts in place a process by which we can start to engage in some of the already available FCPS resources and HR if needed. But perhaps with the one thing being clarifying the Chair's role in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. I do think that there's some language on the role of the Chair that was added for next steps may include, and the role of the Chair being notified upfront when Council may be looking into a complaint. And that is, if you go to the last page of the guidance, or the second to the last page, under complaint resolution. I do see that Dr. Anderson also has a question. I'm going to let people read that, and if you are okay with this, Ms. Marin, if I can reserve your 41 seconds for you to come back to it. Excellent. Dr. Anderson?
Kind of similar to what Ms. Marin just raised. And I am looking at Section 3, Part C, where it says what the Chair would do. But what I don't see here, and I don't think it's necessary with all staff, per se, like, if it's your individual assistant, obviously, no one else needs to be made aware of that. But what if it's someone that is like Ms. Cornell, who essentially supports the entire Board? What is the communication link to the rest of the Board? That, one, this is taking place, two, there's an investigation, and, three, whatever actions are taking place in the interim... are taking place in the interim and the timeline, however, will come back together. I don't see notice to the full board being included here.
That's why we brought this to the full board. So if you would suggest that we need an amendment.
Yes, I would definitely.
Perhaps under C, that might be the place to put it.
Do you want language now or later?
Later, when we bring it to the board, when we bring it to adoption. And it sounds like that you and Ms. Marin may be working together on some clarification on that.
Sure.
Okay. Any other question, oh, Ms. Seismarheiser.
Thank you. I think it's, I, I love the idea of clarifying some of the roles. I know part of the, the challenge can be in some of these is when the investigation is ongoing, we don't always. From an HR hat, I think you don't always let the person who's investigated know until it's done to prevent any sort of retaliation or potential issue. So how do you balance that in the, in the regulation with notice to the board and notice to the members while allowing for an outside investigator? And I don't have an answer, but I'm wondering, and maybe Mr. Foster, this is something that you can help the committee weigh in on, right? When you're, when we're laying out the process, how do we make sure that when we have an outside investigator, that the process is able to continue with notice to board members without it then creating issues with the investigations as needed to be done, if that makes sense? So that's something that perhaps you can help work with board members on, right? How do we have a process? Yeah, that would be great. I just want to make sure that the process is, yeah, yeah. If you want to connect with, that would be great, because I do think it's important to really lay out very clearly, who knows when, how does, and in the part of the process to make sure that it's done with fidelity, right? And done with, in a way that protects all the parties involved, people being investigated, the people who are doing the investigation, the people who are informing the investigation, and the one who may have the complaint or the issue in the first place. We need to protect all of them in this process.
Ms. Seismarheiser, may I make the recommendation that we've been working with, with council on this and that they actually present best practices on this to the board and then a motion be made to amend it?
That's what I was trying to get to.
Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get to, is that, you know, make sure that whatever we, amendments or changes, just to make sure that includes those best practices for HR around these things. That's what I was trying to get at.
Mr. Foster? Excellent, thank you. Ms. Marin, I see your.
If you still had some time.
Oh, I apologize, I thought you were done.
No, no, that was my first question. And then I'm also wondering if Mr. Foster, if that is different, that process between whether it's the board member and their individual staff person versus the board member and other staff who may be reporting to either the entire board or to other people in the division. So I just wanted to put that out there as well. Great, thank you.
Are you, are you done, Ms. Seismarheiser? Okay, excellent. So. I believe it's on Thursday. Ms. Seismarheiser, can you help me? It's. For new business on Thursday and adoption two weeks later, is what I understood. Yes. Thank you. Okay, we can do that. While you're confirming that, I'm going to go to other board members. And Mr. Frisch was ahead, was ahead of Ms. Omish. Mr. Frisch.
Thank you. Back to section C from part three. In addition to what's already been raised, we need to make sure that there's a mechanism included for when the complaints concern the chair or the vice chair, how those will be handled. There's usually a carve out in human resources dispute resolution for when the person who's the boss, we did this when we were looking at our student rights and responsibilities and other things. So we need to have a solution for that. I think that it's, so there's some errant commas, which is not the name of an alternative band that opened for Nirvana or anything, but there's some syntax things in the policy. So I don't know if those are things that should be sent separately or will have to be made amendments, but there's like a comma that doesn't need to be there. The indent, the indenting of the bullets is not consistent, et cetera. So those things need to be fixed before we vote on it. But in section three C, the second sub-bullet, which reads, "Consideration and implementation of appropriate remedies." I get really hesitant when we're talking about a code of conduct without specificity. So I think perhaps we should do some thinking about what, quote unquote, "appropriate remedies" are. Some of that is laid out in here, whether it's, you know, in our governance manual, rather, whether it's, you know, a letter to the board member, those kinds of things. But perhaps we should lay those things out in a little bit more concrete. There's other changes as well, like I believe section two, six. It has a lowercase e that should be, you know, made capitalized, whatever. So I look forward to those changes and I'll be in touch with colleagues about what language might be appropriate for separating out disputes with the chair or vice chair.
So Mr. Frisch, similar to the conversation with Dr. Anderson, if you would make sure that you work with legal counsel on that, because I know that some language, they're just, want to make sure that we are fully consistent with HR law. Thank you. Ms. Marin, Ms. Omish?
Yeah, um, thank you for this work. I, I guess I'm happy to follow that, because I am concerned about some pieces here. One, I do have a question about why we chose to limit it to discrimination or bullying as opposed to kind of the broader swath harassment, et cetera, et cetera.
Mr. Foster? I thought it was inclusive.
Yes, I think that we were trying to be consistent with the process that's currently, and the forms that are currently provided by the Office of Equity and Employee Relations, really for any employee who is, feels that there being the subject of discrimination or bullying.
Ms. Kennedy, you have something you want to come and use my? Okay.
It also does subject the school board members to 4952, which is discrimination and harassment. So, I mean, it, it, it should be all inclusive. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I guess I just want to make sure, whatever. Are there any standard grievances that would be brought forward about a boss or another employee that are not covered by that?
I don't think we've, this, this would not be the grievance procedure, because we, you know, we've, we've talked about that in closed, and that is probably something that needs to come back to closed at some point in terms of how to handle a grievance procedure for this unusual situation.
Oh, so there's, there are missing pieces to this. Wow, okay. We might want to discuss that before we approve this. Yeah.
Kennedy.
Well, this is, this is, this closes the, the gap that's been created, that you don't currently have a process for this complaint. So I think, you know, in terms of mitigating risk, the, you know, immediately getting this part nailed down, and then, and then I think we could bring the grievance procedure to closed, to make sure that that is also, the steps are clear in terms of where those, where they would end up at the top.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I guess maybe that would mean we modify this somehow in the future if there is something missing. I, I mainly say that because I do want to make sure that the standards we hold board members to are the same that any employee would be held to in the system, and that anyone wronged by any one of us would have the same process, availability of process that any other person would. Okay, so I appreciate that. A couple of things. I think that, to Carl's point with the board chair piece, this is no knock on Rajna or Tammy, so this not, I'm depersonalizing this. I, I think just the, the way that our board can operate and dynamics and the political nature of it that never can be removed, apparently. Maybe it's more appropriate to have like the auditor general or the ombudsman or somebody who's just a relatively neutral party end up overseeing. I was thinking superintendent, but then I was like, no, that's, that's too weird. We work very often with that person. But could it be like the auditor general, that we assign her those roles to be part of, you know, the shepherding of the investigation? Is there an issue with that?
Similar to the superintendent, the auditor general reports directly to the board as well. And so that is part of the challenge, is that we as board, in board governance, have to, to manage our own behaviors amongst ourselves, because you put people at a, at a, in a difficult situation.
But then in the case that it's the board chair, what, I mean, would it be someone on the board?
Mr. Frisch has some ideas.
It could be the vice chair that's responsible for that. It could, it could be any number of things. We have to nail that down. It can't be the, in the same way that we can't have the people we supervise responsible for our supervision, we can't have somebody who is responsible for the process responsible for their own complaints.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm trying to think of ways to preserve dignity and privacy in this. I don't know that it's necessarily fair to do it that way. So maybe it could be like, the person chooses, you know, a list of three, I don't know, that it could be. And then a choice is, like somehow, they raffle it or something. I, I only say that because we all know, like, the dynamics within the board, and some are more charitable than others. Again, in thinking of fairness, that might be something important to consider. The other piece that I don't think we clarify here, here is whether that board member then is able to access an attorney, what role such an attorney would play. Do they have access to the board's attorney? Or can they ask, you know, our own division council for counsel? Like, what are the limits there? Has that been discussed at all? Or where, is that something we feel is important to include? Okay.
Okay, that's, there was language on accessing an attorney, but that was actually decided to put it into governance rather than into this policy, because I don't think we were as a collective committee thinking of it from the standpoint of a board member needing that outside counsel in the process. So we should have a closed session on that, I believe.
Okay, so I guess we can add that to the list of things to discuss in closed. The, no. Yeah, to Rajna's, you know, pleasure. So I guess the, the other piece then is informing the board. Again, I don't particularly feel comfortable with that piece. I'm going back and thinking out loud, maybe, maybe it's not even just that person, yeah, like if that person chooses a shortlist and then it's like a raffle, or it's just random from the beginning, so that there's some level of, I don't know, fairness through arbitrariness, maybe not, but better than skewing it this way or setting it up in a way where it's already predetermined. I think I'd be in favor of something like that.
Thank you, Ms. Omish. Ms. Dernak-Kofax.
Thank you. And you were, you and Mr. Foster were dialoguing the way I was thinking right now. I, Ms. Seismarheiser, I don't believe this is on new business yet, is it? No, it's not. And I think we're going to need a closed session. This is, this is not just this policy, but it's the role of the chair and the vice chair and the governance, and there's legal implications. And I think it is difficult. I'll, I'll just leave it at that. There, there are legal implications. And, you know, when something, a, I'll leave it at that. I'm not going to give any examples. There, I was, I was going down that road, but I think it's important that we have an honest and open dialogue in closed. If people feel there are issues out there that need to come forward, I think that's important. And I also think that this is going to take a little bit of time for us to come to a process as to who is in charge of what on this board, and particularly if things go amiss.
On personnel issues.
Correct.
Yes. So I will work closely with the chair to schedule such, such an opportunity. And I think, I, thank you for just pointing that out. I was saying that particularly on the personnel issues, which we are discussing here. Yes, thank you very much. Ms. Tolan?
Yes, I, just a couple of comments. I would, I would think, I mean, we've got a board, we have some, you know, supervision, some employees, right? It's not unlike a corporate situation. So there, there have to be, you know, examples out there that we can follow, right? So I would be interested in just hearing, you know, what some of those are, you know, in this upcoming session that we're going to have. You know, if there's someone on a board that has some type of misconduct, I'm sure, you know, corporations, other public entities have had situations like this. What's the best practices? I, I kind of get, you know, and then, then we've talked a couple of different things with the vice, vice chair and the chair. One, if one of them is the person with the issue, you know, how is that handled? But then if it's another person on the board, is it really, does it really make sense to have the, the chair or the vice chair involved? Should it be someone in HR, you know, that is used to dealing with these kinds of situations? You know, that would be the kind of thing that maybe if we look at corporations and how they're handling it, you know, something, some ideas around that might come up. So, anyway, just throwing that out, just, you know, there have to be places we can go to get some more help.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. One of the things that came up in our discussion was trying to incorporate best practices to the best of our abilities, but also recognizing that this is an elected board and it has different conditions on what you can and can't do. Thank you. Ms. Keys-Gamara, and then we'll go to Go-Backs.
I, I would say I look forward to that conversation in closed. I'm getting a bit worried about the level of weight that can be placed on the chair and vice chair for conflicts between board members when there are people who are trained to handle these kinds of things. And so I look forward to getting some guidance from our legal to make sure that we are following best practices. I'll leave it at that. I, I think that that's, that can be, that can get pretty heavy and perhaps create some unintended consequences. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamara. We will work expeditiously to get this on a closed session. Now for Go-Backs, I have Ms. Marin. I also see, Ms. Seismarheiser, are you for a go-back?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that the reason that this policy is needed is because we school board members are in a different context than any other employee. Whereas in the school division, any of the policies that are listed in section two, paragraph one, revolving non-discrimination, which is sexual harassment, bullying and abusive work environment, and discrimination harassment, there is a different reputational risk because a school board member is involved. Hence the reason to first have it turned to legal. But then, knowing that legal is not an expert in HR facilitation, then we talked about how the HR process could be drawn in. However, there's always going to be this reputational and legal piece of it. So there will be some involvement with counsel, even if we do bring in HR. But anybody in the school division is someone that we technically, you know, make decisions about their employment about, so it's not appropriate for anyone to be facilitating this outright on their own. So I just do want to be clear that this is about the school board member staff and school board members. It's not school board member to school board member stuff. That's a totally different thing. For that reason, I do think that this should remain in a public, open session. I don't see why that needs to go to closed session. And I'd love to hear at some point, when it comes time to schedule, what the merits are of that. But again, talking about this, regardless, either way, whoever's appropriate, I think, is necessary. And I do agree with clarifying things like, you know, the role of the chair in facilitating, if the school board staff has a grievance with the chair or vice chair, how the board is informed, and then the role of legal support, how that is. And a lot of these do have implications for our governance manual content, which is a whole nother conversation, that then maybe that, perhaps I could see that having in closed, maybe. But I'd love to hear the rationale for keeping it closed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. I can assure you that before any of us go into a closed session, we will get a clear delineation of what should be in closed and what should be in public. Ms. Seismarheiser?
Thank you, and I appreciate that, Ms. Marin. I may shall confirm with Mr. Foster and our attorneys in terms of scheduling, and I'll talk to Ms. Corbett-Sanders as well as the governance chair, since this is coming out of governance, about how to manage that conversation. And I would love to hear some of your thoughts on whether we want to have, if we do. And I would love to hear some of your thoughts on whether we want to have, if we do a closed session, whether we want to keep them separate in terms of the policy regarding board members and our staff and then the governance manual changes regarding sort of board code of conduct with each other. I think there's, there's pieces to have. And what's a process for managing both pieces? They're separate pieces. In terms of this one, I know, I think it'd be helpful for us to really codify very clearly exactly what the role is in terms of the board chair and vice chair to sort of manage the process as it's going on versus the, our division counsel and any outside experts in doing the actual investigation. And those are sort of two different things. And whether we want to leave those pieces there or what that process looks like, I think it'd be very helpful to have that clarification. We have some in our governance manual right now, but it's really not as clear. I do think there is some legal guidance around the legality of different processes and roles of different people. So, but I'd be happy to circle back with Mr. Foster to find out. But I guess the reason I wanted to put my placard up is that we've had sort of a, a process when these complaints come to make sure that we have outside experts who do the investigation. It is not the chair and vice chair who do the investigation. It is the chair and vice chair who are informed of what's happening along the way. But the investigation is done through usually an outside, to independent outside investigator when there is a complaint. So I just wanted to clarify that for anyone who's listening. But I think it's a good idea to have a longer conversation about exactly how to codify those different roles and responsibilities.
Thank you, Ms. Seismarheiser. Ms. Omage? Oh, okay, thank you. Well, with that, this obviously is not ready for prime time. So we will not put this item on our regularly scheduled board meetings until we have subsequent discussion. The next item on our agenda is the electronic signature policy, which is a brand-new policy for everybody. And it was a policy that was brought to governance by Mr. Sethi and asked us to fast-track it because of concerns about the needs of people who are moving into Fairfax County that may, that it will facilitate the enrollment process as well as a trial that he wants to undertake next month. So with that, Mr. Sethi, do you want to give a little bit more guidance as to the why?
Sure, happy to. And thanks for bringing this up. We are piloting a product called online registration, which will essentially allow parents to be able to fill out online registration forms to get their students enrolled in FCPS. This has been a need for a while. And Dr. Reed asked us to accelerate the process to support the families which are moving from outside, the, the state, outside the country, and possibly supporting our military families, which generally tend to come in at the beginning of the school year. The initial pilot is to start over the next two months, getting everything ready in terms of training and support. And we wanted this policy in place so we can accept electronic signatures for the parents who may start applying when we pilot this application. We hope to have the whole system after the pilot tested and ready to go for the next school year before summer starts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sethi. Ms. Cohen?
Thank you. I really appreciate this. We are one of the last systems to get onboard with electronic signatures. And I hear all the time from not just our military families, but any of our Foreign Service, State Department. In fact, on the doors this weekend, I had somebody from the State Department who's going to put us in touch with the person in this area who is supposed to be over logistics, who could use some connections. So I said that we absolutely heard it, that we all continue to hear it, and that we're moving towards electronic signatures, which could make registrations a lot easier. You know, the other thing I would say is not just for folks coming in, but families who are new to the system, the hours of our SIAs, which, who work there tushes off. So I'm not saying they should stay any different time. But the vast majority of people are at work during those hours. So trying to find time when you're in the middle of moving and you're trying to go up to the school in a very defined period of time over the summer when offices are, are open a much, much shorter time. I, it is very difficult for families. And it really hurts us with our projection numbers. So if we could know earlier that families are moving this summer, here's their orders, here's their address, here's their rental agreement, you know, they will be able to be accounted for when we start instead of people trying to come in, in, you know, August 31st and, and they're big enough to make a new kindergarten classroom. And now we don't have any teachers that we can hire this late in the game. So I think it's one of those rising tides. It's going to help so many people in so many different arenas. So I'm very, very excited that we're joining in 2023 the wave of instructional, no, just kidding. But welcome to IT. Thank you so much, Mr. Sethi and Dr. Reed, for really, really making this happen. It's one of the number one things that I hear about from families.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Ms. Tolan, followed by Ms. Keys-Gamara.
Yes, thank you very much. We are by no means a leader in this effort. I just wanted to hear a little bit more, I think mainly for the public, in addition to everything that Ms. Cohen just said. I would think that, Mr. Sethi, can you talk a little bit about how that our digital identities might be much safer using this type of procedure?
So this initial rollout is targeting parent registration. So new incoming parents would be able to submit their documents through the, through the online system, which essentially means that they don't have to bring copies and leave it in the buildings. And, you know, at, at that point in time, they're being stored and managed through the building process. Obviously, given it's in one system, we manage common protocols on securing those documents. In future instances, once this policy is passed, it also opens up opportunities for us to do digital signatures across a series of different places where we currently don't have digital signatures. So certainly opening up that, that option of capturing more approvals, signatures electronically from parents, even from staff. Like, a lot of stuff we do internally in, in our HR world is possibly still paper-based. So we can start moving all those systems into the, this, behind this policy. So lots of opportunities.
Thank you. Excited to move.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Ms. Keys-Gamara?
Yes, I, I want to say thank you for bringing this forward. I know myself, I'm not the only one who's heard from a number of military families that have difficulty having to move from one district to the other. And, and we have not always made that transition easy. So I appreciate this step and look forward to other steps that we can take to improve that process and to support these families who by no choice of their own need to move from one place to the other and make sure that their children are connected with services within FCPS, particularly special education services. And it's nerve-wracking, based on the reports that I've received, to have to wait till they get here to figure those things out. I do also look forward to the monitoring, understanding the monitoring of how we're moving forward with this and making sure we're verifying. Like everything else, there's a positive and there's a negative. And so I'm sure that due diligence will be taken to avoid the negligent, the, the negative. But thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamara. And with that, since I don't see any other placards, I will briefly speak to this. I, when this came to us, I asked the question whether or not it actually needed to come to the board for a policy versus is this operational? And I was told that because of the nature of it being the registration, we do need a policy for it. And so I welcome this improvement. I do have one ask. And I think we have to be much more deliberate and intentional in how we communicate how personal data is protected by FCPS and how we, our security, you know, protocols, so that people have confidence that registering electronically is a safe and welcome way that also expedites the process. And so, Mr. Sethi, do you want to speak to that? Because I know you do so much in the area of cybersecurity.
Yeah, and I think we'll take that as feedback as we put out FAQs for this. We'll make sure we list some of those things in the FAQ. One of the changes we started making with this new tool is going to be increased password security for parents. So as parents create new accounts, they're going to be forced to have more complex passwords, which is a critical component. We are also, as part of an RFP, which was put forward, changing our identity management system. And that's a massive shift. We are taking something which we acquired and built over the last 10 years to something which is more modern and appropriate in this day and age. That'll allow us to put multi-factor authentication, which we all now, you know, see as employees, in front of parent accounts. And that, I think, is a much-needed, longer-awaited change. So we can start tightening up parent log-ons to, to systems like student information systems.
And I've had questions at what keeps someone from registering a child that is not theirs through this process? How would that, what type of security protocols are in place to ensure that a parent or guardian is the one who is enrolling the child?
So there is, in the process itself, and this is the training we will undertake with the SIA's, they do get engaged in the process to have one verification somewhere in the process. For the military families, they work with the central registration teams, and they have protocols built out for that. And as we expand to all schools, the SIA's would be the ones who will validate that bit of information before they confirm the registration for the families.
Thank you. If you could build that into the FAQs, that'd be great.
Will do.
Thank you. Any other questions on this item? Yes, Ms. Omage.
Thank you so much. I think you all have heard me say this too many times at this point. But I am curious, you know, that registration is such an amazing opportunity for us to gather all kinds of information about our community that helps us then track our success with them as they grow in our system. And we've seen the limitations of not having all kinds of data, whether it's in tackling mental health challenges, whether it's in, in the calendar process, you name it. And we continue to only collect the federally required racial categories without thinking a little bit more expansively about all kinds of facets of, of our kids' identities and ways that we might be able to actually target supports and, and, you know, be stewards of our resources based on our understanding of, of exposure or lack of exposure they've had to various opportunities. So I know, Ms. Youngblood Hall, I saw you here, yeah. I know we had talked about this a little bit before. Has any thought been given to how we might leverage these online forms, tools, to being more expansive in those ways in a county that speaks over 200 languages and being able to generate? And then, actually, I hadn't thought of this before, but I know we had thought of maybe even when it comes to something like language, right? Rather than having boxes that people tick off of like what language they speak, maybe, Mr. Sethi, I'm thinking like AI somehow, it ends up kind of auto-generating categories based on what people are submitting? So we, we allow people to, to, rather than box them into like five options, we allow them to put how they identify. And then, over time, that builds out, you know, based on like how many people have filled out like the main categories. And we can always maintain an other that's just constantly there. Just some thoughts. But I just continue to think about, guys, the fact that we're only looking at like black, Asian, Hispanic, Native, white in a system this complex, we are missing the mark on so many problems where we don't even know the solutions could be screaming at us if we're able to disaggregate so many things. And it's not just race. You know, talk about gender. I know we talked about faith, socioeconomics, I mean, beyond FRM. There's just so much. So I don't know if there are thoughts around that or. This seems to be a huge opportunity to move in a direction that I think many of us see to be obvious.
So, Ms. Omage, the purpose of today's is just on the electronic signature piece and the policy associated with that? I think your question is broader than electronic signatures and goes into what's the type of data that should be collected on individual students? And I think that's the subject of a broader conversation and a conversation that probably requires engagement with the community as to what type of data they'd want to see collected about them as well.
Right, but I guess the signatures reflect consent as to what's required or not, or what's, you know. So I think there's a lot to, of, of possibility there with, because I know that some of the concern around it was, well, will families feel comfortable to be asked about XYZ things? But certain things can be optional. So I don't know. I mean, yeah.
Correct. And we could always look at that policy again. It actually isn't on the governance agenda at this point. Because we did it a while ago. Last year, yeah.
Oh, I remember. Because when it came, I had these same concerns, questions. But I guess I was kicked off of governance by the time y'all voted on it. So. Yeah, but anyways, I, I guess that's something that I want to continue, you know.
Dialoging about.
Yeah, I mean, I've been talking about this for three years. I know staff recognize that it's valuable. When are we going to do it?
Thank you, Ms. Omage. Mr. Frisch?
Just to be clear, the entire board had an opportunity to register their opinions on that policy when it went to consent last year. Any one of us could have pulled it off and offered it for a work session or amendments. No one was kicked off of any committees. No one was denied an equal opportunity to participate in the discussions around the policies that this entire board worked on. I think it is a disservice to colleagues to claim otherwise.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. Ms. Cohen?
Sure, I just want to clarify a couple of things, too. In the, when we register our kids, you allow, you write in what your home language is. Is that not accurate?
Yes.
Yeah. So it's not limited to a choice menu? You just, you write in what you're, okay, no, no, no. I just, no, I, I just want to be sure that folks.
And it's your turn, so please go ahead and finish.
Okay, thank you so much. And the other is just, I think there has, you know, Ms. Omage brings up a good point about what other information could be collected. But I do think we've gotten some legal guidance in the past about what we're able to collect on, on folks. And because we had the same conversation when we talked about employees and what we were able to collect and not. So I didn't know, I think, again, obviously, as Mr. Frisch said, we could bring up this registration policy to have a much more robust conversation in context of when Mr. Sethi and his department gets all of this rolling. It may warrant another look at the registration policy because, you know, maybe there are some different things that we want to reflect. And we probably need to update it to talk about electronic records. So it, it may wind up back with us.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. With that, unless people, okay. Ms. Omage, you've had one go-back. You're welcome to another one. I'm going to keep it very tight, though, because we have one more policy that we need to talk about.
I didn't have a go-back, I just had a turn.
Okay, well, if we could keep it to less than a minute, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify with the legal piece because I do recall working with the legal team on this. And, you know, the concern was that there's a chill effect with asking certain questions, which again is why I mentioned the optional piece for certain families to fill out whichever forms. So there are those that are required, and then there are those that are optional. And that was really just a matter of board appetite for moving forward with that despite that consideration. We're certainly, we certainly wouldn't be the first division to do so. And I mean, I understand, you know, folks want to share, you know, show what they know and all. But I, I think with the, the language piece was meant to be an illustration of an example. Where with race, for example, we, we have very limited categories and people have to choose. I still don't fit in any of those boxes today. So, and, and there are many more people out there who don't. And I think that data can be helpful and useful. And ultimately, committee placements are a shared decision. But it requires some interest to work together to be able to move forward on any of this stuff, anyway.
Thank you, Ms. Omage. So we have one last policy to discuss today, and then we have governance priorities. Once again, I do appreciate us being given the opportunity to speak about these issues. The last policy is a policy that was brought to the board, I believe originally by Ms. Cohen and Ms. Seismarheiser two years ago. And this new policy, it was pulled off of consent. There were some input added to it. And if I can just have that brought up, and I know Ms. Maron worked closely with Ms., or Dr. Anderson and the whole governance committee on the concerns. Dr. Anderson and the whole governance committee on the concerns. What is important about what we are bringing to you today is we have changed some of the nomenclature to parallel what is done by the Board of Supervisors in calling them proclamations, and also giving more flexibility to individual board members to celebrate successes of kids and employees from within their regions, magisterial regions, or other affinity groups. So with that, I see, Ms. Marin, who worked so hard on this, why don't you go ahead and add your remarks?
Great, thanks. And thanks to Ms. Seismarheiser and, was it Ms. Cohen, who worked on this. This is one of those other ones in the category of things that just didn't get wrapped up for various reasons. So, yeah, so what the governance committee did was a few things. One of them was to try and make more meaningful and well-attended the recognitions of our groups. You know, while we love to, to share in the joy of our students' accomplishments and our staff, it is hard to get to Luther Jackson Middle School at 7:00 in the middle of the week. And so we did look to the County Board of Supervisors as to what they did, and they offer a proclamation that is actually just for the, like, observances of cultural heritage, or we want to honor our staff, or have a certain statement about values of the board. And so those proclamations would be done, and they are listed in the adjusted language. We did start by doing attract changes with this governance manual language, but it got very messy. There, there is some content that still relays, but the proclamation language is new, the description, but then the listing of the different observances is what was from that fall, was it fall or the spring, whatever was mentioned, of those different dates. I will say, I think we might need to look back at a few of them, some of them, I think March is pretty full, so we might want to reconsider that. I know, Ms. Cohen, you could speak to, you had done a lot of research on which things fall in which days and months, and so I'll leave that to you. And then it also pulls in from the governance manual the other ways that are already listed that a board member can show appreciation or acknowledgement of an activity. So the existing in the governance manual is a letter from the school board chair on behalf of the school board, so that content has stayed the same. And then number three, the individual school board member's recognition, again, so this is that part where we're taking those recognitions of the teams and our staff, or anniversaries or renaming of school facilities and that kind of thing, to the, having the individual magisterial members and at-large members, or any school board member can, of course, attend, but really making it more personalized and localized and sharing in that celebration with the staff and students in the community. So, so that is listed there. And the last page is the form that is still from our governance manual, so that is just replicated there. So two things in the parking lot are, what if we have, we have situations, whether positive or negative, where the board will want to make a statement at the outset of our meeting? The governance manual doesn't clarify what that is, so that's something that could reside here or in another part of the governance manual. And then the role of student representative in offering recognitions. Originally, this draft did have the student representative offering that recognition, and that could be further fleshed out. But again, the goal here is to streamline this, to make it enjoyable and meaningful. It's gotten, you know, to be very long-winded as, at times, and I've heard things from, I didn't mean that negatively, but just, it's gotten long, and I've heard from constituents who would prefer to have something more personalized and meaningful, so I hope that we can move this along, as it's been on the hook for quite some time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. Ms. Darnak Kovacs, followed by Ms. Cohen, Ms. Pekarsky, and then Ms. Seismarheiser.
All right, so on page two, under the development of process of a proclamation, midway through it says conflicting edits will be raised to the chair and vice chair, and the maker of the motion has final approval of what is publicly posted and brought forth as a motion. I think when we were talking earlier about having too much authority as one board and being a level board with, you know, when we were talking about chair and vice chair roles, I absolutely do not agree that the maker of the motion has final approval. This has to be a board vote, there can be very widely conflicting informa, thoughts about what should be said, so I would not be comfortable with that. And secondly, I guess I am a little, I am a bit, I think I understand, but I want to know what is prohibited and what is not. Oh, wait, one more thing on that, I knew I had another thing on that, on the proclamations. I don't think the chair and vice chair actually choose, we, Rachna and I don't choose, Bev has a, Bev has a rotation, Ms. Madeha, as to who has read proclamations, so it's not a cherry-picking where, you know, somebody gets this because of another reason. So Ms. Madeha, will you confirm that, that you do a, you have a listing or?
I would correct.
Thank you, thank you. So I wouldn't be inclined to change that either. I would allow the natural rotation to come. And then my, the thing about, I hear the advocacy about individual board members going out to their schools or their communities, but I do think there is some benefit of coming before the board, the full board, and I'm not certain how you delineate that or not, like, so, there was, let me just say this, there was, there was the time last year where we didn't get to the state championship basketball team, and that was very messy, and, but that was because we were welcoming Dr. Reed onto our team. And what happened, though, was we ended up going out into the community, and several of us went, but it was much less than, it was like four of us, three or four board members that came, and we were there with it. So what are you talking about? Which one? When we went to Hayfield?
Yeah, the one at Braddock.
Okay, so, well, that was different. I'm talking about the one that I experienced. It was much less of a, like, ta-da experience than it could and should have been. So I, I'm still not convinced that this is the right way to go, and I'm not certain, you know, how, how we will define that yet, but I think there are certain, there are certain achievements that it is very lovely to be represented to the whole community because the achievement is so large, and I'm not certain if we have defined that yet. So I'm still thinking we need a little work there.
Thank you, Ms. Darnak Kovacs. Ms. Cohen?
Thank you, and thanks to Melanie for pulling all of this back together again. I think Rachna and I met, like, four times, five or six times over Zoom, and I will, I will say Rachna did a lot more work on it than I did. And so it's just so, I just, I appreciate you bringing it back from the dead. I think, you know, to Ms. Darnak Kovacs' point, I think when we had this conversation, at least in governance, the idea was that the board member could choose, because I recognize for some, for some folks, it, you know, they may think that it works better, you know, to have it be at a formal meeting, and I, we absolutely wanted, the intention was absolutely to respect that decision, but to allow some more flexibility for, like, we found a couple of times, and that's, I think, why the Lake Braddock one went so well, we, because of how crazy these girls' schedules were with gymnastics and everything they did after, we could never get the whole team to come. And so it was amazing that the kids, only a few of them had showed up to that board meeting where it didn't happen. And then we were able to do it at the school, the whole team came, the coaches, the trainers, everybody, and we coordinated it with the House of Delegates who had a proclamation at the same time, so they got their House of Delegates members, which probably is not a bad idea for all of us to do anyway in a perfect world. So I really liked that idea of, then it went home in the Lake Braddock newsletter, everybody got to see it, you know, it didn't, sometimes, some schools are better than that of others, of pulling the pictures off of our website and all of that. So we kind of liked the idea of giving some, you know, some room for people to do different things. And I know sometimes, too, it's hard for our at-large folks, like, to find their way in navigating, like, that this is in this district or in this school or whatever, and so we hope that, like, more flexibility allowed at-large members to take ownership of whatever piece was happening, you know, all over the county, and not feel like it got subsumed necessarily by a magisterial member. The other thing that we really worked, and I, I am fine if everybody wants to just summarily make that change to clerk of the board instead of chair and vice chair about the proclamation assigning. But, you know, I, I do feel like, at the end of the day, trying to align ourselves with how the county does it makes slightly more sense, I think, to the community. We have definitely had, I like the idea of changing it to a proclamation, because we've definitely had people have some confusion. I tried to look at as many other systems as I could, and it seemed more systems than not use proclamation and not resolution. And you kind of think proclamation evokes what, you know, you want this thing hanging on your wall instead of, of just the vote. And since the resolutions are, took a second and voting and all of that, we felt like that was slowing down some of the time, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Ms. Pekarsky?
They're important to have, but it takes up so much of our business meeting time, and we bring people there to come, share their opinion, and then we make them wait for, like, over an hour sometimes, over an hour and a half. I mean, honestly, it's just, it's embarrassing a lot of times. So my advocacy will be, instead of saying that we can speak to it per Robert's rules, we have got to pick a time, whether that is two minutes, three minutes, whether it's just, you know, pick two, three people can speak, I'm open to ideas, but even if we all just spend two minutes talking, that is a half an hour with transitions. And we have had board members speak to these for over, multiple board members, over 20 minutes, just one person. We have got to fix that. It is a serious problem, public doesn't like it, I certainly don't think it is an effective use of my time, and I would like to see something put in there, I'd like to hear people's opinion on it, I'll offer my own amendment if I don't hear anything from anyone on that. You know, if there are ideas about how to streamline some of these, if we, you know, don't do them every year, or we alternate years, I don't know, but I think whatever we can do to try to streamline these is extremely important. I don't, I don't have a very strong opinion whether we go out to the schools or we, we do it in front of the board, maybe we offer, let people pick what makes, you know, the most sense for them and makes their life easier, and, and we can do it either way. Some communities, some schools, it's just is not an option for people to bring their kids after they work a full day, or they're still at work. So, you know, those kids should have that recognition as well, so maybe that's kind of a compromise.
Ms. Pekarsky, I expect we will be taking this back to governance at our next meeting. Ms. Seismarheiser?
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Seismarheiser, followed by Mr. Frisch, and then Ms. Kies-Gamaro.
I think she read my mind, because I have written down here time limits on speaking to this, for the same reasons that I think sometimes then we get to the work of the board and some very important conversations really late, where the public may not be watching anymore. So I did see that the proclamations still require a board vote and a motion and a second, I was wondering if the space to sort of, again, have a rotation where it's just read by somebody and we can figure out some, as opposed to the motion and the vote and the second. Just a thought, I'm, I'm not, you know, sticking to that, but I know currently we have some resolutions and recognitions, and one is read by a member and the other one's a vote, so, just a thought there. I agree with the time limits, as well as maybe limiting who or numbers, I don't know how that would look, but I think that's a conversation worth having. I also want to thank Ms. Marin for all her work to pull this together, and thank my, my partner in crime here, Ms. Cohen, for the first round that we did on this. I did see that there's still something in here about certain ones were suggested to be read by the student representative, so I don't know if that's the conversation to go back to governance. I do think it's important to have a role for the student representative in these, whatever that looks like. I, I wanted to just clarify what Ms. Darnak Kovacs said, I agree with her, we don't assign these at this point, there's a rotation, board members have the right to say, I'm not, I don't want to do one this month, and it goes on to the next person in the rotation. Board members can say, this is an area that's particularly passionate for me, and ask, make that ask, but it doesn't come to us, it's the clerk that does that. I just want to clarify on here, it says, any, the letter from the school board chair, just to say, on behalf of the board, not just a letter from the chair individually. It just says right now the letter from the chair. But I also, just my biggest advocacy here is, I don't think the maker of the motion should have final approval either. This is the board's proclamation, right, and it's coming from the board as a body, so I think it's important for whatever process we put in here, that the board is a body. I will just say, I think it is important to have a process to know how edits are going to be accepted and who's in charge of that. So I don't know what that looks like, but, you know, and if the person who's reading it doesn't want to read it, that's fine, but it is the board's proclamation, the board's resolution. So I would just, my ask to governance perhaps would be to come up with a really tight process for who puts the original draft out there, what's the timeline for that, who's responsible for taking edits, who's responsible for okaying edits, how does that process look? I think that's, that's super important, because we want the, what the board as a body is celebrating to be what's out here. So that, I don't mind reducing these. Ms. Cohen, I spent a long time on, on looking at these heritage and staff and volunteers and trying to sort of combine categories to reduce the number that we did. I'm happy if governance wants to take a second look at those, that is totally fine, but that is, I know we, that's what we tried to do. And as far as going out to the schools versus doing it, I would agree with Ms. Pekarsky, I think let's leave a little flexibility in that space, because if we're recognizing, let's say, a staff member, they may want to bring their family, and their family may not be available at the school. So I think having some flexibility there would be good. So I will stop with one second left.
Thank you, Ms. Seismarheiser. Mr. Frisch?
I also think that the board should be the final arbiter of the language, in part because the last piece of this, the recognitions by individual board members give the latitude of sending a letter or presenting a commendation to a group or a person, where they can put their own two cents into it. I often wonder if, if that part of our meeting is more about us or about the people we're recognizing? And I've, I've wondered a lot, and I've never asked, because I think I know the, the answer, how many people download the photos that we take at those meetings? And I bet I could probably count the number of downloads from the last six months on one hand. You never, you might see one or two of them used online. I think I've certainly seen two of them used online over the last three years. So at some point, maybe I'll ask OCCR to let me know what the download data is for the photos that we take at board meetings. You have to really dig to find them in the first place, and I don't think we notify people that they're available. Additionally, I'd be perfectly fine with no speeches for any of the, or whatever we're calling it, the proclamations now, zero speeches, and if somebody wants to address the, the big occasion that we're celebrating on that day, they can do so, and their board matters, but we have to agree that board matters is not going to be on the chopping block if that's the case. Now, that shouldn't be a problem if we're eliminating the, the two hours of proclamations and speeches and whatnot at the beginning of the meeting, we should have plenty of time to not be at midnight or 1:00 in the morning by the time we get to board matters. I'd be interested in knowing if we've ever surveyed past participants or recipients of these things, to feel out how they feel about coming out to Luther Jackson, or whether they would prefer, would have preferred to receive their proclamations or recognitions at their schools or at other events. So I think there's a little bit more work to be done here. It wouldn't be a bad thing to do a snap survey of, let's say, the last three months of participants to see what they think, and get some, some quick answers back on it. I, of course, think that we're missing things that we could be issuing proclamations for, but I think that's why we're here in the first place, is because we've tried to do absolutely everything. And I am willing to sacrifice the few things that I would like to have added, knowing that everybody at this table has a few things that they'd like to have added, and then we're back at square one. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. Ms. Kies-Gamaro, followed by Ms. Omesh.
I appreciate everybody who's tried to work on this. I don't think there's any, any really easy answers. I think sometimes we kind of run into, we clash with how can we be more efficient against what we're used to doing, and, and sometimes that creates a little angst in and of itself. I do support the super, the student rep having a clarified role. I, I- I, I am not real supportive of the idea of nobody speaking. Um, I do, you know, I personally have had people make comments to me of feeling that they were recognized by board member comments, and so perhaps there's maybe a way to shave those, perhaps a lottery of who would speak at each one, so that it's not 12 people. I, I know that there's this group thing that can happen, where one piece, person speaks, and they go, oh, my goodness, I wasn't going to say anything, but now I have to. So, um, maybe, maybe there's a, maybe there's a middle ground, uh, here. I do agree with the board having final approval of what is being spoken on behalf of the board. Um, and I, obviously, I think typically we all have an opportunity to give comments, but, um, the final, the final product should be something that we all agree with. I'd like to propose that, you know, if we're having students come after these activities, and I know my boys would, you know, it's, it's, that's, that's when I got my frequent flyer, driving miles, and we're, you know, we land in Luther Jackson and all of that, and so, I just wonder if we want to think about perhaps moving them up in the meeting. I know that there are, uh, people who want to make public comment, but for the most part, those are adults, and these are students who have, um, a really stressful, um, you know, sometimes very stressful, uh, calendar that they're trying to keep up. Um, I think we may be able to identify ti, other time-saving measures such as, such as the lottery. There may be someone who feels particularly strongly about a certain thing, I'm happy to give my time if I don't have those same feelings. So, there may be some agreements we can make ahead of time, so that we know how much time that we need. I also support a survey. I think sometimes coming to the school board meeting and being recognized by those who govern the school board, the school system is, is a big deal to some families. But, of course, I think we can, we can flush that out with, with some of the things that Mr. Frisch, um, meeting, uh, mentioned. And then the last thing I want to say is, you know, I would also like to figure out a way, I know sometimes I have seen situations, or not events, that perhaps I wasn't aware of, uh, and I didn't see an email on it or anything, um, and so, we may want to also include in this ways for board members to understand how they can participate in the community in recognizing, uh, students. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamarra. Ms. Omeish?
Yeah, thanks. I guess I, you know, this is such an interesting conversation in thinking of how we, how we identify these and how we're fair and what, what voices are uplifted, and I think about, like, if we're to try to be purposeful, um, about this, and thinking of this being an opportunity to uplift voices that are otherwise overlooked throughout the year, or could, you know, be, it could be celebrated, et cetera, I wonder if we can actually rethink the time we spend and offer it as an opportunity to hear about, I don't know, like, what, what are, what people in our division are doing around this celebration, or give slots, I don't know, if it's like five two-minute slots or something, to, sometimes we have, like, members of organizations or heads of organizations that represent, or show up for the picture or whatever, to hear about, like, what it's, what it's like in their experience being a custodian, being a teacher, being a whatever. Um, you know, that might be more valuable than, than our opining around any of these topics. I'm wondering if that could be a way to use that time if we're claiming celebration of, of these various groups, um, so something to consider. Because I don't, I, I am total, like, I'm inclined to want to just not have anyone speak on it, but then, the whole point is for it to take up some space, and the whole point is for it to be at the center for a moment, uh, and, and hearing the amazing stories of our students, staff, whatever, related to that thing could be really helpful. The other thing is, I wonder if, I know every, our equity team is already stretched thin, but if someone can give some thought, ideally the equity team, to just, what, you know, what are some of the pieces that are nationally celebrated, what are ways we can think a little more expansively, do the things that we celebrate properly, um, support and, and represent our community? That's constantly a concern for me with all of this. It, I mean, we happen to celebrate the ones, is our standard going to be federally, federally recognized things? Is it like Virginia celebrate, like, how do we decide what ends up on this list and what doesn't? Like, I remember there was Disability Heritage Month, we do Inclusive Schools Week, and we do Disability Acceptance, but then what about Heritage Month? Like, why is it this, not that? Or even the immigrant heritage thing, right? A constituent brought that up, and we've added it. And then, where the resolutions fit in all this? Because that could potentially give more weight in certain areas that make it unfair to others. So, I, I don't think we can have this conversation separate from resolutions. And I'd also try, I, I'd also really like for us to show up at the table, not with perhaps our own personal lenses into this, but in really trying to think of, like, how we're being representative of the community and of the county, um, and what we're missing, because I can only imagine, I mean, I can think of a couple of things in my own mind, but I'm sure that there are so many more that I'm not even able to think of, because we haven't, oh, sorry, I didn't even look at the time. But yeah, so, so I guess this is scheduled for a work session, in my understanding?
No, this is the work session, so we will take it back to governance with everybody's input and...
After everyone checked out, okay.
No, I don't see everybody checking out, but okay. Um, thank you. So, um, I see two placards going back up again, um, Ms., but before we go to the two going back up again, Ms. Tolan, please.
I'd be quick. Um, just quickly, just running through, um, I definitely support, if board members are speaking, to have a time limit, um, but I did also like some of the ideas that were brought up later, perhaps if we just had, if we were still doing, you know, with a proclamation, if a board member presented it and it was seconded, if just those two people spoke. I mean, generally, we have a procedure where it kind of goes out by email, these are the things coming up for this week, you know, does somebody want to first and second these things? So, people that felt very strongly about those topics, you know, could have the opportunity to be the ones that speak. Um, I have been at some of the board of supervisors' proclamations, and of course, their meeting goes on for hours and hours and hours as well, but they generally, I think, do have people from the public or the recipients of the proclamations have an opportunity to thank them and, and speak, and so, I, I do kind of like that idea. I think we would limit it to maybe two board members, maybe two people from the public or, or something to try to keep it smaller, but, um, anyway, then just a couple of other quick comments is, I really do feel that the maker of the motion in this paragraph here should not have final approval, that it should be a board, um, proclamation. And I also like the idea of, for recognitions, that, um, you know, people receiving those would have a choice as to if they would like to get that at their school, or if they would like to come to a board meeting. I think for, um, some of the people that, you know, we've recognized, I know from my district, they really were excited about the opportunity to come to Luther Jackson. So, um, those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. So, we have go-backs, I'm going to limit go-backs to one minute. Ms. Cohen, followed by Ms. Seismarheiser, Ms. Keys-Gamarra, and Ms. Omeish.
Yeah, I just wanted to address that different equity office, um, different superintendent, different, so I do recognize, but when Roch and I did this originally, we sent it to equity, we sent it to ISD, um, I think we even sent it to Title I, we were trying to, MSAOC, to try to make sure that folks felt like, what are we missing? But I think it's never the wrong time to reevaluate that, so if it's coming back to governance, maybe, um, Dr. King with everything that's on your plate, but if, you know, if you all don't mind just giving it a cursory review and see if we missed something, if it's coming back to, um, governance anyway. And, and just to that point, I think that, that's what's at, it, root of the problem here, is that when Roch and I looked at it, and we were trying to consolidate these because they were overtaking our meetings at the time, we all are going to have to give something, and I don't know what that looks like. I like your idea of lottery or different, like, I, I agree, something has to give, and maybe we can come to a consensus on, on what it, what it is.
Ms. Seismarheiser?
Yes, similarly, I agree, and it took us a long time to kind of streamline these lists, and I think it's worthwhile taking a look at it. Dr. King, if you have time to look at it, maybe, um, Madam Chair, as the Chair of Governance, to take a look at that, to make sure this list, and I know we struggled even talking about how many per month is too many or too few without cutting out, you know, trying to have the right balance of recognizing, you know, the variety of groups that we have and not leaving anybody out, but not having 10 per month that overtook the meeting, and we really struggled on that piece, so I think it's worth having another conversation, and maybe as board members weighing in on what is that right balance? And maybe you can have more groups recognized if we have fewer speaking to it, right? For example, if we're reading four proclamations, but we have only two members, and I'm making these numbers up, so, you know, whatever it may be, but if we have more members speaking to the proclamations, we may want to have fewer in terms of the amount of time. So, I would just put out for governance to have that conversation of what's the balance, like, board members speaking versus the number of groups that we can recognize. So, this is a thought.
Thank you, Ms. Seismarheiser. Ms. Keys-Gamarra, followed by Ms. Omeish.
Just one more consideration, because I'm, I'm picturing a menu, perhaps, of ways that we can do this. I, I may want to crawl under the desk when I say this, but we, we, you know, we've had public hearings where people have an opportunity to come and speak on whatever they want. I mean, we may need to have something perhaps at the end of quarters where, where our young people are doing amazing things, and we just want to highlight student success, right? And we, we designate a certain time to do that and a certain hour or so where we allow that, and then, you know, we use the lottery system and everybody feels like we touched various groups that perhaps we haven't been able to do in the past. So, I'll add that to the list, and don't get mad at me.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamarra. Ms. Omeish?
Yeah, um, with that, I, I was actually thinking, the Equity Office might collaborate, but really, maybe the Chief Experience Officer could be a better fit for this, I don't know. I mean, seems to be kind of in your wheelhouse, but just some thoughts, some collaboration between those two teams would be good. The other, uh, thing I was going to ask, so what are, what are, what can our expectations reasonably be from here for the Governance Committee? Because I know several of us mentioned things, we're going to eventually see this again. I'm hopeful that it's reflective of some of the comments made, but I guess I wanted to hear...
So, Ms. Omeish, um, you may have seen the very detailed email that I sent out over the weekend. You can expect a similar, very detailed, uh, follow-up on this, as well as with the school board conduct policy, and it will be after the governance meeting, a Governance Committee meets next, and we'll have more to come back with, on it. It's not clear that if we build all of this in, hopefully, we can avoid having another work session, but that we can bring it for adoption.
Coin of clarification?
Yes, mister.
Any board member can attend and participate in Governance Committee, they just can't vote unless they're a member, right?
That is correct, and they are welcome to come. We love seeing visitors. Okay? Um, Ms. Seismarheiser, before...
Just a point of clarification, if we, if, based on what happened with governance, it could come to action instead of consent if you do want to have conversations on it as well, so...
Correct, but it really depends on, we need to have a meeting, so I don't make commitments without knowing what I'm committing to. Um, so, thank you. We have one last item on the agenda today, and I know that we are half an hour or 25 minutes over. In the memo that I sent to everybody, we talked about the governance priorities and a process going forward. There are three items that we talked about, and, um, if you could provide input or feedback to us, we'd really appreciate it. The first item is to have a process by which the beginning of every Governance Committee year, which usually is, um, the beginning of September after committee assignments or in July, depending on the chair's prerogative, once those committee assignments are done, that the Chair of Governance would work with the Superintendent and identify two areas of the governance to focus on for the year, because as, um, Ms. Maron has noted, and so thrilled that she does, uh, that there are a huge number of policies that have not been updated, and we need to have a structure in place that allows us to go through that. So, this year, you will see, um, our business processes, our procurement and our HR policies coming to you for, uh, review and changes adopted based on the input from the Superintendent, and that process would be built into our governance manual. The second thing that you will see in the note that I sent to you all was a recommendation that at the beginning of any individual board meeting, that we would actually have an adoption of the agenda, so that we have everybody committed to sticking with the agenda that is before us on the table. And, um, with that, if you have any comments on either one of those or anything else listed in that note, although I think we've covered everything today, um, please let us know, and I am going to try to give you all, um, a gracious thank you for spending a half an hour longer than was expected. Ms. Maron?
I just want to say, I think this is time so well-spent. I mean, we just got through a ton of stuff in a short amount of time, like, having these regular governance updates, I think, really can help us, so I, I hope that we can schedule this more often. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maron. And with that and without objection, I would like to adjourn this meeting.